Koto-kun, what are you daydreaming about?
Hinata-san!
You're acting too surprised!
You're the one that surprised me! Her name was Asahi Hinata-san. For some reason, she always messes with me, Kotae Amamori. She's the real deal. She's a talent for an agency.
It's because you always react in a funny way. I just can't help myself.
You little... Maybe it's her carefree personality, or her amazing looks that would make anyone fall for her. She's the most popular talent in the world. Thanks to that, she's been escalating her behavior. If you keep it up, I'm not gonna teach you anymore.
Wait! Hang on! That's not fair! I'm gonna have to stay behind!
She was a huge popular idol, but for some reason just comes to a regular high school like mine. So she can't pass unless she gets the grades. And for some reason, she came up to me when I was acting as a class council member during my sophomore year. Thanks to that, I still teach her after our junior year class. There are many days that she comes over, so we don't really get much done, but... The school's letting her go with days attended, so they shouldn't let her go with her grades too. You know, you should just go to a school that has an entertainment-oriented curriculum.
Mom won't let me. I have to go to a regular school and finish college. If I get held back, she's gonna make me stop being an idol.
I mean, you're so popular already though. I wonder why?
I don't really like idols. She was against it from the get-go, but it was my dream, so I begged her to let me do it.
Hinata-san...
I mean, I get why mom is worried. It's not all good, being on TV.
If you get famous, you have to face many different kinds of people. There are people you've never seen that will attack you on social media, and many people get mentally ill because of it. Not only that, but there are some people who can be troublesome as a fan. She was actually the victim of a stalker at one point, so her parents drive her to and from school. Her parents care about her safety first, so they're not on board. I don't think I would be alright if something happened to her either.
You're the only person for me, Koto-kun. Please don't abandon me!
This girl is seriously not fair! Fine... Don't say things like that, because you're gonna make people around us misunderstand!
Yay! I love that about you!
Just said "stop that"! She really has no understanding that she's a popular idol. Or she just says this kind of stuff to her fans too. Maybe misleading to others when she says this stuff outside of her work hours though. Luckily... I'm not a good-looking guy, so not many people would make that mistake. She should be a little bit more aware though. After class...
You really are so kind.
That was sudden...
You're probably so busy with your own studies, but you always help me out.
I mean, teaching you is a good way for me to remember stuff too. And besides, you can't really have this kind of experience normally.
I mean, I am a super-famous idol. You better take good care of me.
Stop being so full of yourself.
That's totally fine. You're really kind, so you'd never get mad at me for real.
There are no people that would actually get mad at you.
I mean, there are a lot of people that I think are scary, but they always fall for me. Maybe it's the superstar powers...
I think that a lot of people like her personality too.
There are a lot of people that don't like me though.
Hinata-san?
They say that I'm pretending to be cute or prissy. I'm faking my character. I'm bitchy behind the scenes. That kind of thing. It's really tiring hearing it over and over.
That's just jealousy, right?
I mean, yeah, maybe. I don't think everyone is though. Some people just don't like my personality, period. I just wanna be an idol that everyone likes.
I can tell the kind of person she is since I've been with her for over a year. Asahi Hinata seems like she doesn't care about anything, but she's actually pretty sensitive. I'm sure she can ignore the heat on social media. I bet your mom is against it because she knows her daughter well.
Ah! I'm gonna show off that I'm studying!
I don't know about that.
It's fine. A lot of people think I'm stupid too. I wanna show off that I'm studying!
I do think you're a little... empty, sometimes.
Studying with my bestie! There we go!
Can we get started with our study session?
Yeah! Hey, Koto-kun!
Hmm?
I'm gonna be the top idol one day, so make sure you cheer for me!
Yeah, I'll be rooting for ya. She is absolutely the cutest girl I've ever seen. Including all the women I've ever seen on TV. She's got talent and a drive for singing and dancing. She's better than anyone else. It's only a matter of time before she climbs to the top. That's what I thought.
Huh? Oh, it's my manager. I wonder what it is?
That is rare for her to get a call.
Asahi! What are you doing?!
What is that scream? She's super furious!
Don't yell at me! I went to school that I saw him studying after class! I told you beforehand!
You told me it was with a girl! Why are you with a guy?
Huh? Wha- what are you talking about?
Look at your Instagram! You're the center of controversy right now!
What the hell? She has a boyfriend? This is the worst. I was betrayed. I was into her from the moment she debuted.
I knew it! She just acts like she's never been with a man. She's all about the men behind the scenes.
I opened her Insta page, and just like your manager said, there were people up in arms over her photo. She's absolutely in flames right now. The news was accelerating as well. This was just the beginning.
No way! How does this happen?
Calm down, Hinata-san. Her manager would hear me if I spoke out loud, so I tried to gesture her to calm down, but she didn't seem to calm down at all.
Look at that photo that you just took! You're with a man!
No way! I made sure that they couldn't see...
It was a mistake. Yes, I was not in the photo directly from the angle she took the photo, but she had forgotten about the reflection.
No way. This is...
Need to get your ass to the office right now and bring that boy too!
Hinata-san, let's go. We need to figure out what to do. She completely found out about everything, so I just spoke up. I took a pale Hinata-san and rode a taxi. Told your agency that you were with a girl?
Yeah...
Why would you do that?
Because they would never let me be alone with a boy. It's not like there's anything there, so I thought it would be fine.
You can't lie to your agency!
Ugh...
Sorry. I'm not trying to attack you or anything. I should've been on the lookout too. If I'd cared about the reflection, this never would've happened. So first, let's just be honest with the agency, and then figure out what to do.
Uh...
She seemed to have calmed down a little. Her expression softened. Still, this is... Didn't see things actually calming down with how things were going. Her agency wouldn't appreciate it either. I hope I can help.
You've really gone and done it, and at an important time like this...
The second we got to the office and started explaining, she went from anger to pity. I'm sorry.
Even if you two are just studying, like you always do, like you say you do, this whole controversy is gonna affect your image long-term. I've already received some calls from people saying they're canceling business with you. Not only that, but it's affecting other members in our agency, and they trust us less. How are you gonna take responsibility?
Hang on! Sure, she was the one that screwed up, but you don't have to attack her so much.
Shut up! She's in the entertainment business! There's an incredible amount of money being moved around! Some child who has never even seen our society works can't see a damn thing!
I can tell that much even if I've never worked. But we're not really dating, and she didn't mean anything by it. More than anything, she's still a minor. Yes, there's a problem with the fact that she was lying, but the truth is, she's innocent. Please try to protect her.
Don't have to tell me! We're going to do that anyway! But she didn't understand that she was this popular! If she did understand, she wouldn't be alone with a boy! That's what led to this in the first place. You have to teach her the right way!
What are you gonna do to her?
I have to talk to the higher-ups, but we're gonna have to have a proper conference and talk to everyone. And we'll have to pay for all the contract cancellation fees and no public appearances until everything calms down.
Do you really have to do that much?
There are very few fans that will believe the press release. Many fans will still be suspicious of her and leave her. Some will stay to attack her. More than anything, you aren't off the hook either. You realize that people have already posted your private information on the internet.
No way! I've affected Koto-kun too?
Of course! After this photo, everyone will find him in person soon enough. There are fans that are head over heels for you. They will never forgive him for stealing you. That kind of pent-up rage, you know what could happen. That's what you've brought upon yourselves.
Oh... I'm so sorry, Koto-kun. It's my fault!
What's done is done. Don't be so worried. I'll be fine.
Asahi, you need to go wait in the other room. I'll tell you more details over there.
But what about Koto-kun?
I still have to talk to him. I might even have to talk to the police and have a security detail on him.
Eh? I'm sorry, Koto-kun.
It's okay. You just focus on yourself, okay?
Yeah... Thank you...
Phew, she's gone. This really was something.
I'm so sorry! If only I'd been more careful. This never would've happened! I am so sorry for the scandal that I've created for your agency!
It's okay. Just like you said, what's done is done.
Huh?
I know that there was a problem with her awareness. But she's kind of a free spirit, and this was her selling point. I couldn't really say much about it. It's awful too.
What's going on? She's acted completely different from a second ago.
I have to be tough on her since this happened, but I know that she's a very sensitive girl too. So please support her. I know that you guys aren't a special thing or anything, but she does seem to trust you.
But... Shouldn't you try to push me away from her in a situation like this?
I don't want you two to be in contact out in public, but the most important thing now is to take good care of her. She's the one that's in the most pain right now. So I want you to take good care of her without getting noticed. Even if you can't talk at school, you can use your phone or come by the office. We'll handle all the paperwork.
Miss Manager... Think she really does know Asahi well. That's why she's trying to make it all work.
I will talk to the powers that be to make sure that you're safe as well, so don't worry. We'll drive you around if you need for a while too.
Thank you.
It's okay. I'm the one that's asking for favors. Take good care of her.
She left to Hinata-san after leaving me with those kind words. She immediately had a press conference after this. She explained everything that happened, but a lot of people on social media still continue to not trust her. There were countless comments attacking her. Thanks to that, her energetic attitude disappeared. She was so depressed. Few weeks later, and she was still as depressed as ever. Hinata-san...
Koto-kun...
Are you okay? You sleeping alright?
Yeah, I am.
Then why do you have bags under your eyes? It already happened, so don't worry about it. Let's switch our attitude and face the future.
I know, but I can't with all these comments! What did I work so hard for? I don't know anymore!
Asahi-san...
I'm just a kid that no one needs anymore. I don't have any fans...
That's not true. I'm definitely a fan of yours.
Koto-kun...
And there are a lot of mean comments on social media, but there are definitely a group of people that are rooting for you as well. Asahi Hinata is a superstar, right? You have to pay attention to the people in your corner.
I can't. I can only pay attention to everyone attacking me. Everything that I've built up is just gone!
Then let's just build it up again.
I'm here?
You love being an idol, and you've even convinced your mom, right? You can't give up here. You did nothing wrong. You can get back what you've lost. If you look forward, then I'll do anything for you.
Really?
Of course. It's an honor to support the superstar, Asahi Hinata.
Okay... I'll try again.
I mean, I'm glad you're finally over it, but you two better not act like that in public. People already know your face, Amamori-kun.
Ooh, we won't! I'm an idol. Why would I do that?
Hinata-san didn't want to cause any problems with the other members, so she left her team. She started her new career as a solo talent, but...
Welcome back, Asahi-chan! We've been waiting for you! Ignore all those haters!
First live as a solo talent was a huge hit.
Thank you all!
Fan support was the best way to cheer her up. All the clouds that were clouding her heart were gone.
I'm sorry to keep you all waiting! Asahi Hinata is back and ready to make you all happy again! Please root for me!
Yay!
Seems better now.
She's still gonna be upset when looking at her social media, but I think she's good now.
You've gotta support her well, okay? I'll teach you how to be a good manager.
Thank you, ma'am. I became a manager trainee, so that it wouldn't be suspicious for me to go into and out of the office. And the day I promised that I'd support her was really the day that I was hired as a trainee. I needed to be by her side. That's why I learn a lot from her manager now. She is pretty tough though. I kinda knew this before, but... She's the kind of tough-love kind of character, but I needed to work hard to become a man that could support her. Ten years later...
Thank you so much, you guys! This was such a dreamlike career for me! I hope that I have given you guys all the joy that you gave me!
She got over the controversy and was stronger than ever. She really was the top idol, and today was her final live concert as an idol. Congratulations on your career, Asahi.
Yeah, thank you. I was able to push this hard thanks to you. Thank you so much.
It's just because you didn't quit and you kept pushing. I didn't do much.
No, just being by my side was good enough for me. Now that I'm not an idol, you'll keep my promise, right?
Yeah, of course. The promise was that we would officially start dating after she finished her career. We slowly started to fall for each other, but we didn't start officially dating. That was her decision.
We've been holding off this whole time, so you gotta spoil me a bunch now.
Where there are that many people, okay? You're still in the entertainment business. She was now just a singer instead of an idol. That meant we still had to care about her image, but...
You can just spoil me at home. Let's get married!
It was fine as long as no one was around, so all we had to do was find a place. We weren't going to get married yet, but looking at how she's acting, we're not that far off. I was going to continue working hard to make sure my cutest girlfriend in the world would continue to be happy.
When I was in the early grades of elementary school, Chi-e's family moved into the house next door. We became fast friends. Wherever we went, we went together.
Come on, Michio. I'm leaving.
Wait for me, Chi-chaan!
Nope. Follow me.
Chi-e was very naughty for a girl. Being the quiet one, I was always being dragged around by her. Many of the pictures in the old album depicted us covered in mud. Back then, Chi-e didn't care about the scars on her face. That was back when I still called her Chi-e-chaan. Many months have passed since then. Now Chi-e doesn't get covered in mud, is careful not to get any scars on her face. She's a typical girl. Well, to be exact, she's a popular and cheerful girl.
Akio-shi-san sure is cute, huh?
She's also cheerful and easy to talk to.
I would love to have a girlfriend like her!
Chi-e became a popular topic of conversation among the boys when she entered junior high school. Now that we're in high school, there was a popularity contest. She would probably win.
Michio, let's go to your place.
Wait, is it today?
Yup. Dad and them are away for work, so I'm just having dinner.
Let's get going then.
Aye aye!
Shisuka's so lucky! I envy him!
A child with friends, right? Yeah, but I'm sure someone as scrawny as him is no match for her.
True.
Hearing my classmates say whatever they pleased made me well up with anger.
Michio, what's wrong?
What?
Your face looks scary.
What do you mean?
Hmm... Like you look angry.
I'm fine. Let's go.
Sure. I wonder what's for dinner tonight.
They said it's beef stew.
For real? I love Auntie's beef stew!
That's probably why.
What do you mean?
I think mom made it because she knows you like it.
I'm so loved.
Speaking of being loved, do you want a boyfriend or something?
Boyfriend?
Yeah, since you're popular.
I guess...
Even today, the student council president called you out at lunchtime, right?
You saw? Yeah. I rejected him though.
Really?
Are you so surprised?
I mean, 'cause he's famous for being good-looking.
You don't go out with someone just because of their looks, right?
That's true, but...
What, you jelly?
Eh?
You're scared someone is gonna take me away from you? Hoo hoo?
Yeah.
Huh?
I like you.
Huh? Are you referring to the beef stew?
What? No, you're the one who likes that. I'm saying I like you, as a woman.
As a woman, you say?
Yes.
That means you want me to be your girlfriend, right?
Of course.
I'm sorry. I like you, but we're like family. I can't imagine going out with you.
No matter what?
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
Oh, you did that quite well.
Nah, I kinda had a feeling you'd say that. I'll tell you now, since I'm bitter, I'm heartbroken. I feel like crying.
You don't look like it.
I'm holding it in, like a man.
Man, huh?
What?
How could I say this? I still see you as an elementary school boy. So when you say something like that, it feels weird. Doesn't add up to me. You're like my little brother who always follows after me.
That's what you meant earlier about seeing me as family?
Eh?
You can't even consider it because I'm a little brother to you?
Well, when you put it clearly into words, maybe.
I was in shock. She didn't even see me as a man! And I never had a chance in the first place! As my classmates had said, I was scrawny and unreliable.
Can't be helped, right? Think about it. You're slower than me at running, and you can't even beat me in an arm wrestle.
I challenge you.
Michio?
There's a marathon coming up in two months, so I challenge you, Chiye.
What do you mean?
If you only see me as a little brother, then I'll just have to make you see me as a man.
Are you serious right now?
Yes.
In the marathon, the boys have to run a little longer, you know?
Consider it a handicap.
Handicap?
Yes.
Hmm, handicap? You give me? Sure, underestimating me.
Look who's talking.
Fine, I accept your challenge. If I lose, I'll be your girlfriend or whatever.
No take backs.
Of course, it's not like I'll lose.
I'll make you eat those words.
In exchange, if I win, you buy me juice every day for a month out of your allowance.
Sure.
Alright then.
It's a deal. The deal has been sealed. Since then, I started training. It would've been impossible if it had been just a day or two, but with two months to prepare, there was hope. I focused on improving my physical fitness. No chance of winning if you don't have the fundamentals down. After all, it is true that I'm slower and physically weaker than Chiye. It's gotten easier to run. The first few days were tough, but gradually, my body started to get used to it. Soon, I was able to run the marathon course without any rest.
Ooh, look at you go.
What are you, a villain?
Oh, shut up.
You're not gonna practice?
I get enough practice from PE.
Yeah, but...
I'm giving you a chance.
Oh, is that so? I see you're pretty bitter about me giving you a handicap.
I'm not.
No point denying it. You always were competitive.
Why do you look so happy?
Huh? Do I?
Yeah.
Oh, that's probably because you're finally seeing me now.
What do you mean?
The fact that you're willing to compete with me means just that, right? This is better than having no chance with you.
Weirdo.
Whatever you say.
Did you also get taller?
You noticed? Yeah, I got taller. I gained some muscle, too.
You really are trying.
I'm going to win.
Well, that's out of the question.
You just watch me. Alright, I'm fired up! I'm gonna go run some more.
Now? But you just got back from running.
I think my stamina got better, too.
Don't push yourself too hard.
I can't promise you that.
Why?
I need to make up for all the time I lost in order to catch up.
Catch up to who?
You, of course! I have to become a man who can stand next to you, so I have to work hard.
Alright, work hard then. So much so that you pass out.
I will.
I won't go easy on you.
Don't worry, I'll give it my best shot and make you accept your loss.
Big talk.
Ha-ha-ha, see ya!
Michio laughed and ran down the street as I stuck up my tongue. He's getting further and farther away. They say people change with time, and Michio seems to be changing every time I see him. I didn't notice anything when we were together all those years. He's come so far in a short period of time. I felt a little sad about that, but also a bit hopeful. I wonder when he got taller than me.
As I started running and my body changed, so did the way people looked at me.
Doesn't Michio seem to be glowing?
Huh? Really?
He looks different, too. Like, he looks more confident. Didn't Zunano-chan the first year approach you during lunch earlier? The cute one?
Oh yeah, she seemed to have seen me running, so she was wishing me good luck or something.
What? No fair! Man... That's basically a confession!
Yeah! No, it's not.
No fair! Only Michio! It's bad enough that you and Akiochi-san are close since y'all are childhood buddies.
I'm having a hard time because of that, though.
Huh? What?
Never mind. Anyway, tomorrow's the marathon, huh?
Ah, so depressing.
It's practically the sole domain of the athletic students.
I'm okay so long as I'm not last.
Me too. I'm planning to go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. We know. We've seen how hard you've been working. I can't run with you, but I'm rooting for you.
Godspeed! Yeah, thanks, guys. I'll definitely win.
If you and Akiochi start dating as a result, I'll be super jealous, though.
Yeah! Never mind. Give me back my excitement from ten seconds ago! Anyways, the decisive battle is tomorrow. I'm excited about running a marathon for the first time in my life. The next day...
Michio, today's the day, huh?
Yep.
I'm going to win.
Not if I have anything to say about it.
Let's make this fair and square.
No excuses. Let's do this! Our school's marathon has a different distance for men and women. And to avoid crowding at the start, the women's race begins 10 minutes after the men's event. Still, the women's squad has a big advantage over the men. Unless you're an ace, you can forget about beating the girls' lead group. So my game plan before Chi starts... Oh, man. As expected, the people who train hard on a daily basis are of a different level. There's no way someone like me with no expertise, who just trained for a few months, could compete equally with individuals who have trained for years. Still, I kept running. I might lose ninety-nine times out of a hundred. But today, I was determined to do it! After a few minutes of running... Chiye! I finally found my target's back! I caught up to you!
Oh gee, didn't think you had it in you.
I told you, didn't I? I'm gonna win this thing!
But you look exhausted, dude.
I'm at my limit. I'm moving with sheer willpower at this point.
Poor thing. Don't think I'll take it easy on you, though.
You bet! Whenever Chiye sped up, so did I.
You little...
I won't let you out of my sight!
So persistent.
I'm going to win! The goal was within sight. The school. Once we made it to school grounds, this long race was over. This is the last spurt. And Chiye knew it as well.
All or nothing!
I'm going to win! We both made our last spurt at the same time. Using every ounce of our strength we got left. Running side by side, five meters, ten meters! Then I finally passed Chiye! Yes! If I just make it to the finish line, I win! But I couldn't do it. Because I realized something. It wasn't that I passed because I was running faster. Instead of accelerating, Chi slowed down. And that's what made the difference. What's wrong?
I think I sprained my leg.
Are you okay?
Uh, yeah, we're almost there. So I think I can make it to the finish line without retiring. But looks like I'm going to lose the race. It hurts too much to run.
Oh no.
Man, it's so frustrating to lose without running all the way to the end. But that's the way it goes, and I have to accept it. Come on now, get going. Fair and square. No excuses, remember?
You're right.
Yup.
Alright then, I'm going to finish.
You should.
With you!
Huh? Huh? What are you doing?
You can't run, so I'm carrying you.
Didn't ask you to do that.
I'm doing it cuz I want to. There's no way I can leave you behind, knowing you're injured. So let's go together! However, I was also at my limit. One by one, people started passing us.
You're ruining your good rank. Put me down already!
No!
Put me down!
Never. I don't care what place I'm in!
What do you mean? You worked so hard to get where you are.
I really don't care about the ranking. I don't even care if I'm in last! My goal was to beat you!
Huh.
Don't sulk!
I'm not sulking.
You are!
No, I'm not.
You called me a little brother, but you're still acting like a little kid, too!
What was that?
Nothing. Nothing at all.
Aw, stupid Michio. Alright, already. You've come this far, so do your best.
Got it!
I'm rooting for you.
Uh-huh.
Almost there.
I crossed the finish line with my Chiye on my back. I got passed by a lot of people in the last few laps, so I ended up placing in the middle. But I ended up getting the most applause that day. I think my effort was rewarded. After school... I was carrying Chiye home. Uh, Miss Chiye?
What?
Why am I carrying you again? I'm really beat, you know?
I can't hear you!
You clearly can.
That's what you get for not putting me down no matter how many times I told you.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Chiye.
What?
Shall we call off the bet?
Why?
It doesn't feel right. I won because of an accident. That doesn't make me happy at all. I'll just do my best to make you like me.
Really?
Yep.
Hey, since when did your back get so big?
Haha, think I've become a little more dependable?
You still have a ways to go.
Oh.
Oh yeah, I definitely lost.
Were you even listening? I don't plan to give up, so you don't have to give in.
Of course, I want one month's supply of juice.
You're hung up on that?
But you know what they say.
What?
The one who falls in love first loses.
Wait, you mean... When I tried to look back, Chiye got angry.
Look at me!
Wh-why?
Cause I said so!
You embarrassed?
I'm not.
Liar!
I'm not, but that's how it is. I'm your girlfriend from now on. Got it?
I really wanna see your face.
No.
Ah...
I'm too embarrassed!
There was a bright red sunset in front of us. In the light of that sunset, both of our faces turned bright red. She could've just blamed it on the sunset. She's so stubborn. But I love that about her.
After school like usual. Just the two of us like always. I was enjoying time alone at my school club, with the club leaders as usual. Hey, Fudo.
What is it, Kaki Tsubata?
I've completely gotten used to this atmosphere. Do you not know what it means to go easy on someone?
Don't make fun of me. Of course I know what that means. We're in our final year of high school.
I didn't mean it in that way.
Okay, I've taken all of the corners now. Oh, this feels so good to turn them all into my pieces. So you wanna keep going?
Of course, till the end.
Okay, then. Bring it on.
Fortunately, there was basically no way for me to win from here. Nobody would be able to turn this around. I ended up losing. It was a huge loss. Fudo had filled up pretty much the entire board with her pieces.
Okay, I win then.
Damn it.
Wanna go again?
Of course, until I win.
Well, I'll never be able to go home at this rate.
I'll make you regret those words.
Well, you've never had a better win percentage than me in the past three years.
Well, who knows what's gonna happen today?
Actually, we both know the results already. History is just gonna repeat itself.
Hey, let's play again, then.
Yeah.
Alright, good luck.
Good luck to you, too.
Me and Fudo. In other words, Kaki Tsubata Kodo ro and Fudo Mio were the only two members of the board game club at the school. As the name suggests, the club activities involve playing various different board games. Today, we played a game called Othello. Until last year, there were members from the year above us, and it was quite popular. However, nobody joined the club from the years below us. And once its 30 years graduate in spring, the club is gonna be closed down. It's February, and most of our classmates have already graduated from club activities. However, me and Fudo intended on attending this club till the very end. Both of us had already decided on where we were going next year. From this spring, I'm gonna be heading to a college in Kansai. Fudo is going to be going to a college in Kyushu. There was one thing that I definitely wanted to do before then.
Ah, it's pretty cold out here, isn't it?
It's probably gonna be a lot warmer by the time we graduate.
That's kinda sad to think about, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Did you lock the door?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, let's go home, then.
Yeah.
Hey, Mio! What are you doing at a place like this?
I just finished my club activities. I was just about to go home.
Oh, you're still attending your club? I guess you're able to relax as you've already gotten accepted into college.
Heh, how about you?
I'm so not sure what I wanna do after high school, so I was just discussing things with my teacher.
You're working really hard.
I wonder if you really mean it.
The classmate that Fudo was talking to quickly glanced my way.
Mio, you're going to college in Kyushu from April, right?
Yeah.
Isn't it going to be hard for you and your boyfriend? It's long distance, right?
Boyfriend?
Yeah, I'm talking about Kaki Tsubata.
Her classmate makes eye contact with Fudo, and looks a little confused.
It's not like that at all. I'm not dating him.
What are you talking about? You guys have been dating since the first year of high school.
We're really not dating.
Heh, must be difficult having a shy girlfriend like her, Kaki Tsubata.
That's what's so cute about her, though.
You really are a lovey-dovey. I'm so jealous of you, Mio. You're pretty and already have your future plans sorted out. And you have an understanding boyfriend.
I'm telling you that I'm not dating him!
Yeah, yeah, okay then. Alright, I'll be off.
She said her farewell and started walking down the corridor. Alright, we should get going as well, then.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm gonna go return the key quickly, so you can wait for me at the entrance.
Why, though? Let's just go together.
Well, it's pretty far away.
It's fine, it's fine. As long as it's with you, I don't mind the distance, right? It's fine, it's fine. As long as it's with you, I don't mind the distance, right?
Returned the key and went outside. The sky in February was very gray, and it looked like it was about to snow any minute now. Our breaths fogged up as soon as it left our mouth and disappeared into the cold sky.
Ah, it's so cold!
Don't you have gloves?
I think I forgot them in the classroom.
Should we go back to get them?
Ah, it's okay.
I guess it can't be helped then. Here.
What are you doing?
It's gonna be warmer if we hold hands.
I guess so.
She didn't seem to mind me holding her hand, and she wrapped her fingers around mine. Her hand was really small, and very cold.
Your hand is really big and warm.
It's a good way to warm up your hand, right?
Yeah, it's great!
I'm glad it's helping. Oh yeah, by the way, Fudo.
What is it?
You have feelings for me, right?
When did I ever say that?
Then, do you dislike me?
I didn't say that either.
Just hurry up and admit it already.
There's nothing for me to admit.
Even though we spend so much time together every day?
Well, we're a part of the same club.
Even though we're holding hands?
Well, it's not like we're kissing right now.
You really aren't honest with your feelings, are you? When are you gonna admit it?
I am honest with my feelings. I don't wanna date a guy that's worse than me at a board game.
She makes the same excuse as always, and tries to change the topic again. So that's why I had to beat her at a board game. I wanted to make her admit her true feelings for me, and then start dating her. We didn't have much time left until we graduated and went our separate ways. Our first met Fudomio around three years ago. It was right after entering high school. I wanted to try something new and decided to join a club with an interesting name.
Huh?
Oh, you're from the same class as me. Board Game Club.
My name is Fudomio. Your name was Kakitsu Bata, right?
Yeah.
Are you gonna join this club too?
There was a sign saying "Board Game Club" right above our heads. It's kinda rare, right?
Yeah, I guess so.
So, does that mean you're gonna join this club too?
Yeah.
Oh, that makes me feel a little better.
What do you mean?
Well, if I was the only first year joining, it would've been the worst. I can relax more if there are two of us.
That's true. We should join the club together then.
If one of us is gonna quit, then we quit together too.
Yeah, sounds good. Let's try to get along for the next three years then.
Okay, it's a promise then.
You better not break it!
You too! Okay, let's have fun for the next three years then.
Yeah, let's...
From then on, I attended the club almost every single day.
One of the seniors found a really rare board game. I'm gonna win today!
I'm not gonna let you! You guys get along really well, don't you? Are you guys dating?
We're not dating!
Apparently not according to her.
Why are you saying that? We're not dating!
She definitely has feelings for me, but she won't try to admit it at all.
You're just assuming things!
Well, I don't really mind either way. What? You were the one that started this conversation. Hurry up and help with the preparations.
Okay!
Let's have fun together as always then.
And I win, again!
One more time!
The results aren't gonna change no matter how many times we do it.
Be quiet! One more time!
Fine then!
I joined this club on a whim, but I had a lot of fun. Spring came, summer passed by, and then we welcomed fall.
What are we gonna be doing today?
Hmm, what should we do? Any requests? A game that I can win!
Unfortunately, a game like that doesn't exist.
Damn you! You guys really do get along, don't you? Winter came. It was the season of fail whales. Well, this is it for us. We're gonna be graduating this club.
I'm so sad!
Don't cry, Fudo! Two of the seniors graduated. We didn't manage to recruit any newcomers. There were just five of us left in the board game club. Well, just the five of us should be enough. However, if we don't manage to recruit anyone next spring, this club is gonna have to be disbanded. Good luck, Fudo, Kakitsu Bata.
Okay!
Things were good till summer. However, once fall came and the seniors became busy with college applications and exams, only me and Fudo attended the board game club.
It's become really quiet.
Yeah. The room that was once so loud and lively was now very empty and silent. It was spacious, quiet, and a little lonely. Shogi pieces.
So, what should we do today?
Let's do some shogi once in a while?
Okay, but I don't really know the rules.
Okay, then I'll teach you.
Do you know the rules?
I only started studying the game recently.
What? That's not fair! You've already done some research then! You're planning to play a game where you had the huge advantage and win! You really are so unfair!
It's too late now! Once we practice a few times, we're gonna play for real! I'm finally gonna win against you! I ended up... Losing. Why?
And the victor is Mio! Yeah!
Damn it, why?
Hey, no offense, but...
What is it?
This is just a difference in our talents.
You totally meant to offend me.
This is the difference in our talents! Hehehe!
You've said that twice now! You definitely meant to offend me by saying that!
Shogi was really fun, though. We should give chess and Go a try sometime too!
Yeah.
We're probably gonna have to play a game like this for the rest of our year after all.
We'll recruit new members in the spring. We won't have to wait long.
True.
Winter came again. See ya, Kodoro, Mio. Thanks so much for everything.
Thank you so much!
We should be the ones thanking you! We're really glad that you guys joined!
We'll be waiting for you guys!
Best of luck! The three remaining seniors ended up graduating too. It's just us two left now.
Which one of us should be the club leader?
That's one that's better at board games, of course.
Then it's me!
Whoa, hold on. Let's actually play a game to decide the winner.
Well, I think we already know who's gonna win.
I wouldn't be so sure about that. She won very easily as usual.
Okay, I'm the new leader of this club then. I'm more important than you!
This isn't fair!
You're gonna have to work as my underling for the rest of this year then.
The last spring, our final year of high school. We tried our best, but we couldn't recruit any newcomers. We didn't manage to welcome anyone new again.
I wonder why.
I have no idea.
However, I'm glad that you're still here.
Why?
Well, I can't play board games by myself. It wouldn't be any fun without you.
Um, Fudo?
What is it?
I was thinking that we should officially start dating soon? By this time, I thought that I completely understood how she felt about me. I also knew how I felt about her, too.
What?
You do have feelings for me!
I don't have feelings for you! Here's the evidence! Show me, evidence!
My chocolate was clearly bigger than everyone else's.
I gave it to everyone at the club. You're just remembering wrong!
It was in the shape of a heart too!
You're just remembering wrong! That was meant to be the shape of a sunfish!
Are you for real? We also went on dates together, remember? We went to the beach together. We also went to festivals together. We also spent Christmas together too!
Well, that's because I didn't have anyone else to go with!
But, it's not like you didn't like spending time with me, right? We should...
Look, if you wanna go out with me, at least become better than me at playing board games. Otherwise, I'm not even gonna listen to what you have to say.
Oh, you're really bothersome, aren't you?
What is it?
Shogi pieces. Bring it on then!
Yeah, bring it on!
Alright, same as always then.
Yeah, let's enjoy the game!
I heard about this from one of her friends at a later date. Fudo becomes really embarrassed and shy as soon as it comes to romance. She's unable to be true to her feelings. I really fell in love with such a bothersome woman. The seasons passed again. Spring, summer, fall, and winter went by. It was the last day that we would ever attend this club. Today is the day before we graduate. Tomorrow, we're graduating from the school.
So, today's the last day?
Yeah, let's play shogi. This past year, we played a lot of shogi. Apparently, we had gotten stronger than some of the members of Shogi Club. We're gonna finally win today!
It's a little sad to think that this is the last time I'm gonna hear that.
Let's have fun.
Yeah, let's...
The sound of us moving the pieces echoes across the room.
A lot happened over the past three years.
Yeah.
How was it for you?
What do you mean?
Did you enjoy high school life?
Is there a need for me to answer that out loud?
What do you mean?
Well, we both feel the same way, right?
What?
Well, we spent the past three years together.
I guess so.
We met each other for the first time right in front of that door three years ago. We kept our promises and stayed together for three years. We shared all of the happy moments and sad moments together. There are so many memories in this room. However, the only person that's gonna enjoy a happy moment today is me!
Huh?
Take this! This was the best move I had ever made. I had won.
Wait, what?
She kept on staring at the board over and over again. A lot of thoughts are going through her head. The sound of the clock ticking is very palpable. We're completely alone together in this room.
Yeah, I'm out of place.
Then... She looked up and faced towards me.
I love you. Please go out with me.
She finally admitted that she had lost to me. Wait, what?
Well, you finally beat me in a board game. I told you this before, right? I wanted to date someone that was better than me at a board game.
So unfair.
What do you mean unfair?
I've completely lost.
Wait, what? Do I still have to play to turn this game around? Show me!
That's not what I meant! Damn! There's a saying, right? The one that falls in love is the loser. I continued to lose over and over to you. And I just fell in love with you again.
Oh, uh, so that's what you meant. However, Kotaro...
You've never called me Kodoro before.
Well, you're gonna be my boyfriend from now on, so I can call you that, right?
Of course.
Well, call it a draw for today then. I fell in love with you again too.
And that's how we ended up leaving the club room that we had spent the past three years in. I was sad to leave, but I was also very satisfied with how things came to an end. So, why are we still playing shogi even after we graduated?
I thought about it after getting back home yesterday.
Thought about what?
The reason why I lost. So let's play, one more time.
I'm gonna win either way.
You don't know that! Stop getting ahead of yourself! You've only beaten me once! This conversation...
Yeah, our roles are reversed.
It feels fresh.
Alright, let's have fun.
Yeah, let's enjoy this game.
When are you gonna move again?
In a few weeks.
I see.
What about you?
Around that ti-
Well, it's gonna be a long-distance relationship, right?
Are you sad?
Not exactly sad, just a little worried.
Huh? Worried about what?
At this rate, I'm gonna have to move away, losing to you. I need to beat you again before I move away.
That's not possible. I'm better than you now.
What?
Take this! It's over for you!
Wait, hold on!
I'm not gonna wait!
You're so mean!
Um, we're gonna live far away from each other, but...
Yeah.
We're gonna find a part-time job and save up.
Yeah.
I'll come and see you, many times.
Me too.
What?
I'll come and see you too.
I'll be waiting for you.
Don't cheat on me.
You too!
There's no need for you to worry. You know firsthand about how difficult it is to make me say that I love someone.
I bursted out laughing. It was exactly as she had just said. Yeah, you're right! It took me three whole years!
Thank you for watching! That was today's video. Please check out our other videos as well!